So it's 7:03.
Yes.
Okay, welcome. This is our second meeting of the month and as you know this is an informational meeting. We certainly welcome your comments and questions. And is there anyone?
Jeanne Demone.
You're on.
I have just, I, this, a lot of you know, read the education news and I have, this weekend, I saw that New York State has mandated mental health education be taught K through 12, starting July. And I hadn't heard anything and I was curious, they said K through 6 will be classroom teachers and I can see how we can work that into the curriculum, but I was curious how it was going to roll out 7 through 12. Are there any plans? Like, they did say that there would be a curriculum available, is that the curriculum we're going to follow or will it be something we're going to develop in school? Who's going to be teaching those courses? If a kid took, like my son, if he took, he took it in 9th grade, will that mean that he won't be a part of that anymore? It's going to be every grade level? What else is I wondering? Has it been budgeted for? That was another question. Will they have to hire more health teachers? That's it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Marie Murphy.
Just to let you know, we will certainly have answers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I had a great conversation with Ms. Ward, so I just wanted to let everyone know that we did have this conversation. But last week, we, as a 2nd grade team at our meeting, were told that we were going to go from 3 sections to 4. And throughout the whole year, we've been saying, they've been saying, you'll be 4 sections, you'll be 4 sections. So this led me to some data collection because that is what we have been doing in Kent Hill for the last few years, so I collected some data. I went to all special area teachers. I asked them, what was the most challenging grade K4? Because that's our elementary. Approximately how many challenges per class? And what makes this grade level a challenging group? Those are my 3 questions. I have the whole thing, I didn't type it up if anyone wants it, I will give that. Without question, the most challenging problematic grade level for the 2017-18 year has been 1st grade, quote. That was from one teacher. As a veteran teacher who has worked with many groups for a long time, this is a group that needs special care, extra resources, and smaller class sizes. The other couple were 1st grade, 1st grade. So those were, were 4 of the 5 special area teachers. One's not tenured, so I didn't bother. There are 5 to 7, according to each of them, 5 to 7. Some said 5, 5, 7, 7. Kids that are problematic or challenging. There are multiple students with varying degrees of challenging situations. And then they list them, and I have it, as far as foundational skills, family problems, aggressive behavior, define a behavior program. I have the list, if anyone needs it, I can email it to you. Then I went to the 1st grade teachers who deal with these kids academically every day. Number 1, question number 1. Kids in, how many kids in class? 17 to 18. 2 of them have 17, 2 of them have 18. What are the challenges that this class faces? And they said, attention, love, support, boundaries, encouragement, sitting, lying, stealing, swearing, keeping hands off peers, lots of physical aggression, rude comments to teachers and peers, not completing assignments, managing, so, so they went on. Then I, my 3rd question was, have any of your students been suspended? And it broke down to 4 different 5 and 6-year-olds from 1st grade, now they're 6 and 7, have been suspended. So you're talking little kids, 4 different, multiple times. It wasn't like a one oops. There were 4 children suspended multiple times. One person said, this is my first time in 26 years. One student multiple times. Now, we are going to get 1 aide for an hour and a half a day, but the thing is, is we get our aides hopefully during our uninterrupted language arts time, because that's when we teach language arts. And we'll have the aide for an hour and a half. But, and that's, I was like, okay, well, I know on my schedule, I would like it during the language arts time. I don't know what Chad Agustin wants and I'm not quite sure what Chaney wants, but that's when I want my aide. And there's, so, and we don't have teacher's assistants, so that is a whole different thing. And aide, we, right now, we have Mrs. Brimmer, she's amazing. And if we all, if we could clone her 2 times over and have her for, that would be awesome. But, we're going to go from class sizes of 18 to class sizes of 23. Academically, there is more than 1/3 of the kids not at grade level. So yes, I appreciate the AIS support that we are getting, but I've been in this district for 20 years. I've never had a class of 1st or 2nd graders of 23. I've not had a class of 1st or 2nd graders that, according to the veteran teachers that filled out this quick, put together evaluation, or survey, I, with this many problematic behaviors, problematic behaviors. So I guess, my only thing is, if there is money to be had, and I, and I said, I applaud, I saw the trip that kids went on, I was like, great, 11 kids went to DC, they, I'm asking 18 kids, not 3 days, but 180 days. And yes, I, I think with benefits and everything, it's $60,000 or somewhere, it's in that line. But, if you have the money or can find the money, I think this is the class. And it's not because I teach 2nd grade, because I fought for the kindergarten to go to 4 sections, because I thought it was important that with our socioeconomic climate, we didn't have 20 children that are 4 and 5 years old in a classroom. I felt very strongly that that, we needed that. And when I was talking to someone, they were like, well, why is it kindergarten or 2nd? Why can't it be kindergarten and 2nd that has 4 sections? You know, it's kind of like, do I get dressed in the morning and put on my pants or do I get dressed and put on my shirt? I think I need to have the whole outfit for it to be successful. Right now, actually 10 minutes ago, my son is in the wind band. He's 1st time, he did Missma Level 4, he is playing with the high school band and I'm not there. And my husband's like, Anne, you gotta put family first. This is my family. My son, I love him, he'll have many more concerts, I don't get to see him. But, my kids are my family, so.
Excuse me?
That's it, that's it. But I need you to know that I don't take this lightly, that I should be in Albany applauding my son, but I'm here fighting for my children.
Okay, can I just ask you to email that to Mrs. Rimso, so she could share it with the board?
I would be more than, more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. So the next one on the agenda is a presentation by Dr. Pat Michel from Bosie's, Bosie's Overview.
Right.
Welcome to Canaan to Harrah.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize, I canceled like 7 times. I did. I am studying to be a Catholic deacon. And part of that, that study is I have to take theology classes once a week. And Thursday was the theology classes. They're not moving to Wednesday. That's one of them. So I apologize for that. But, we, at Bosie's, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for supporting our budget and for your, your participation in everything that we do. Over the summer, last summer, my board and I got together in our retreat, I'm sure you probably did a similar thing, and talked about some of the things that we might do to help our component districts more. One of the things that we, we talked about was, is that, this is my 7th year now in the region and there's been a lot of turnover in the boards. So there may be a lot of folks out there that don't really understand completely how a Bosie's works or what it's, you know, what it does. And that's not to, you know, not to be insulting anyway, it's just that we have a lot of new folks. And so, my board said, why don't you go out and do a little Bosie's roadshow? And so, that's what I'm here for. So, what's Bosie's? You'll notice that we were shameless and put your kids in all the pictures.
We so appreciate it.
Uh-huh. So, so, the Board of Cooperative Education, as you can see, was really created in 1948. I don't know if you knew that, but look at history. And the point of it is those 4 bullets. And by the way, that's never changed. So we pool resources and share services, we provide programs and services districts may not be able to afford otherwise, eliminate duplication of services, and maximize funding for the classroom. That's our 4 reasons for being, and that's what we should be doing, and if we're not, then you shouldn't be using us. But those are the 4 reasons we exist. And our Bosie's, believe it or not, because around here you don't rush quality, was established in 1967. Took us a little while to get there. Just a bit of trivia, which is the last school district in this region to participate in the Bosie's. No, you can't answer. You're not allowed.
But notice how sexy she is.
Because you're a mole. Anybody else? It was Amsterdam. Right? Think it was 1980s?
Yes.
90s?
It was when I was there.
So, what year?
Within 14 years ago.
Okay. So Amsterdam just recently joined the Bosie's. But, so that was the last of the 15 component school districts that we have. And you can see that our Bosie's is 1,500 square miles. And that's why I drive a lot. I was just telling Joanne that I now practically know every nook and cranny of 3 counties because I've been everywhere. Oh, by the way, I was rude. That's Joanne Freeman, that's the president of my board. She's here to, she's here to make sure that I behave myself. Bosie's Services. So, we're known mostly for special education and career and technical education. In the olden days, what did we call it?
VOTech.
VOTech. Right. Yeah. If you talk to the VOTech, you say VOTech now to any of my teachers and my directors, it's like calling a gym, gym. Now, what is it called?
PE.
PE or PhysE.
Physical education.
Right? Well, my, my teachers have the same reaction. So it is career and technical education. We have some really diverse kids in all of our programs. We also do managed services, like we run a regional bus transportation system. This is an example. We do instructional services, Stacy used to do that with us. We do adult education, we do the Adirondack Academy, which is our alternative school. Okay? We also do economic development, that's one of our missions. So, we actually consider our PTECs economic development. So we have 2, we will have 5 next year. So we are going from 2 to 5.
What are the other 3?
Well, there will be a, what they call, I'm trying to remember the name of the, they just have, it's.
There's the Foothills.
Thank you. The Foothills, for that's Lover'sville and Johnstown. So one's doing gaming and computers, and the other one is doing medical, medical technologies and medical science. And then Amsterdam is doing their own PTEC. They're doing cybersecurity, as theirs. And OESJ is doing their own PTEC. And they are doing business administration and construction. That's their PTECs. Yeah. We do workforce development, we do a lot of it. And we are working now to establish machinist and prototype labs because there's a huge, huge shortage of machinists in this region. Huge shortage. And those jobs are phenomenal. And they pay lots and lots and lots of money. And we don't want our kids to miss out on stuff like that. So, the Bosie's Board runs just like your board, except that instead of the general public voting for us, as you're well aware, you all vote for us and my board members, right? So our board is elected by component school districts, you must be an eligible voter within a component school district of the Bosie's to serve on the Bosie's Board. And you have one of those here. And who is your Bosie's Board member?
Jennifer Bell.
There you go. You are Bosie's Board member. Has all the duties and responsibilities authorized to component school boards. And then that's me. A lot of people don't know, but I have 2 jobs. I have 2 paychecks. They all add to the same amount. However, I get 2 paychecks. I get a paycheck from Bosie's and I get a paycheck from New York State, the State Education Department. So I am the representative, the commissioner in the field. There are 37 of us in the state. State is broken up into different clusters of counties. And the only ones that don't have Bosie's superintendents are the big 5. Who are the big 5? Okay. Rimso?
New York, Buffalo, Rochester, Yonkers, and New York City.
Right. Those are the big 5. So they don't have Bosie's superintendents. Everybody else has a Bosie's superintendent.
Syracuse, sorry, Syracuse.
Oh, sorry?
I've been to New York twice.
Oh, okay. Syracuse is correct.
I should know that one.
And obviously, I serve as the Bosie's CEO.
I was training.
So those are my 2 jobs and that's why I get 2 paychecks. And I meet with the commissioner twice a month. And then I meet with your superintendent once a month, you know, and it's right after that meeting, as a matter of fact. Because then I can convey all their, the orders of the state head department to your superintendent. Oh, and then we gotta talk about a COSER. You guys hear of a COSER? That's Cooperative Service Agreement. Must be requested by 2 or more districts. Requires approval of the commissioner, and guess who does that for?
Right.
District receives state aid, reimbursement on most Bosie's expenditures, not all. So, here are the 3 types. Adeable, non-adeable, and itinerant. My favorite one's itinerant? Other than Stacy? Or Debbie, you can't answer either. What's an itinerant?
Oh, yeah.
That's a teacher that travels place to place. Right. That's an itinerant. So we offer you support with itinerant teachers. It could be psychologists, it could be social workers, it could be ESL teachers, it could be, the list goes on and on and on. Okay? What do COSERS include? The same thing that every program you run includes. There is no difference. Right? So employee salaries, benefits, training, management support, human resources, legacy costs and savings. Very quickly, except for Leia, you can't answer this one. What's a legacy cost?
Pension.
Huh? Not just pension.
For us, healthcare.
Right. Health insurance. Those are the 2 legacy costs. I had my folks do a budget run over the last 5 years, and our legacy costs in our budget, I haven't, I haven't looked at yours, but in our budget has gone up from 34% to 40% in the last 5 years. As a percentage of our budget. So that's a big part of our, it's a big part of our expenses. We already talked about the 37 Bosie's in New York State. There's cross, cross contracts with Bosie's whenever possible. Examples, does, you all use Nowick here? Right? State aid planning? I just saw you signed that cross contract and remember your name on it. Printing, board policies, OLAS. That's a big one, by the way. I wish I owned OLAS. Don't you guys, I mean, my God. And, does, you all know what OLAS is? OLAS is where mostly everybody in New York State looks for a job. That's the online job service. In the olden days, we used to look in the newspaper when I was looking for teaching jobs. Nowadays, nobody looks in the newspapers anymore. It's all, all on OLAS. And that's how it works. And it's Southern Westchester Bosie's that owns that. And they invented it. And everybody in New York State, school districts, Bosie's, everybody belongs to it. And they charge a nice fee for that every year. So, that's not a bad business model for them. Election services, board docs, like, I could go on and on, but all of these are eligible for aid reimbursement. So if we don't offer something and another Bosie's offers something, there is, we have no issue whatsoever with you using that. So not, not only can you get aid on it, but you also can use it if you need it. And here are some other types of aid that you might be aware of. Ever hear of those 3? High-cost aid, textbook aid, building aid. And there it is. A lot of people get confused because there's different buckets of aid. So we always say that we're only 1 bucket of aid. There's lots of other buckets in New York State of aid that you get. And obviously, everybody gets foundation aid, everybody gets STAR. You get transportation aid here, I know that. Right? I don't know whether you're eligible for high-cost aid here or not. Textbook aid, building aid, and then of course Bosie's aid. And here's expense-driven aid versus unrestricted aid. So Bosie's is aid, expense-driven aid. Which means that in order for you to get aid, you have to buy it first and then, next year, you get that money back. That's basically how that works. Whereas foundation aid is unrestricted aid. That means there's no strings attached, you just get it. Right? And foundation aid is paid upfront, usually quarterly, right? Whereas Bosie's aid is not. Transportation aid is also what they call expense-driven aid. You gotta spend it first and then you get it back the next year. Percentage of the cost the district spends on Bosie's shared services is reimbursed by New York State through Bosie's aid following year. The idea behind Bosie's was to give support and aid to rural districts. That was the whole conception of Bosie's, that's why they created it. Small cities got involved with it later on, but the original intent of Bosie's was to help small rural districts just like Canaan to Harrah. That was really the vision. And they wanted us to share stuff. But remember, New York State is a home rule state on steroids. Right? So you can't just tell them to share stuff. So what, what's the incentive to make you share stuff?
Aid.
It's the aid. It's the aid. That's what it is. That's why you get aid when you share stuff, it's like a reward. So that you get, that you will share stuff. And your aid ratios go from 36%, a lot of our Adirondack districts have a 36% aid ratio. Anybody know why?
Park.
Because of the park. Right. It's the park. Yeah, it's the New York State land and the, and the lakes. They are, they're overvalued because of that. And a lot of those, those, those districts have very high poverty rates, but very low aid rates because of the property wealth they quote-unquote supposedly have. So it's a big struggle for them. Leia, what's our aid ratio here about?
75.
Yeah, okay. So for a lot of things, you'll get 75 cents on the dollar, but they also have all kinds of caps in the formula and everything else, so it's lower than that sometimes too. All right? And that, and so that's, and then the famous arwada, I just like the word. So, is there too. A lot of people don't understand too, Bosie's cannot keep a fund balance. So we're not allowed to keep a fund balance year to year. So all the money that we have, if we over, if we don't spend that money, which is our goal, to tell you the truth, we then give that money back to you all at the end of the year. So Bosie's surplus is money not spent during the year. We're prohibited by law from charging more than our costs. So we have to estimate our costs, and if we overestimate for whatever reason, or people underutilize, then that money you get back. And we don't determine what that surplus is, it's by a mandated accounting process done by an outside assessor. So that person comes in and that person decides how much we should get back. That's how that works. And we are allowed reserves, very limited though, and those are capped. Probably our biggest one is the equipment reserve. Like, for example, if one of my bulldozers breaks down in the heavy equipment program, how much does a bulldozer cost? About $250,000. So I don't want to come back to the districts and say, oh, by the way, I can't run this program anymore. Here's my tin cup, please give me $250,000 right now. We're allowed to run a surplus in equipment like that so that when stuff like that breaks down, we can then replace it. So that's why we have that particular reserve. And here's a breakdown of Canaan to Harrah. So you have 35 students enrolled in CTE. You have 12 special education students in our special ed program. You have 8 PTEC students and 6 ag PTEC students. 17 students enrolled in our regional summer school. And by the way, they took 69 exams. And other services, educational services, management services, and instructional services. And, here's your aid. So in 1516, you obviously increased the amount of money you spent at Bosie's and therefore you got more aid. So technically, the next year, that check is what you should have gotten in the mail. And just for CTE, that's the aid ratio that you get. Oh, and by the way, your graduation rate at career and technical education is 95%. So that's, that's how many kids graduate from high school that go through our career and technical education center for Canaan to Harrah. Our total usual year-to-year graduation for every kid in CTE is around 97% for the whole Strong earbuds, Stacy, come on.
What is, what is your outlook going forward in terms of the PTEC situation for our entire area?
Hmm. My push has been, oh, let me give this back before I'm walking out of my, my pocket. My push has been to bring it to the high schools. So, and I'm gonna tell you why, this is, I think it's a great model for kids. Like, right now, we, our first cohort is graduating and I believe, at least it looks like, the semester isn't done yet, but it looks like 12 out of the first 48 are gonna graduate with an associate's degree in 4 years. And mind you, many of our kids that we took into the PTEC program were redeemed by their school districts as being in danger of not graduating from high school to begin with. So, and we're probably gonna see a large number, we only have 3 that are gonna graduate in 6 years, remember this is a 6-year program. The rest will graduate in 5 years. They're on track to graduate in 5 years with their associate's degree as well as their, as well as their high school diplomas. So it's coming, it's doing rather well. What we're looking at is, is taking that model and asking school districts to consider using it in their own high schools. So, and right now, if you think about it, the level of opportunities for all of our children in the region has gone up considerably because of the structure and the way we've done the program. So for example, in, in the Jansen Avenue PTEC, there are 5 pathways a kid can go through. And the ag PTEC, there's like 10 altogether. And then you have all the pathways now being created at the various high schools that are adopting this as well. Also, the state just extended the, the funding for PTECs, they just, for another 7 years. So, so, and what we're working on now is putting that funding matrix into the regular education law. So it's not gonna be grant-driven anymore, it'll just be aided directly. So Canaan to Harrah created a PTEC. It would be, it would be aided directly from the foundation aid formula. So, does that help?
Yes.
So, yeah, I, you know, for us in this region, I don't know how folks know that 58% of our kids in this region don't go to 4-year schools. They go directly into the workforce, they go to 2-year colleges. So the vast majority of our kids in this region are being prepared in the Regents Program for 4-year college degrees. But the vast majority of our kids do not do that. They go either to, directly into workforce in the military, or they go into, they go into 2-year degrees. And we know what the graduation rate for 2-year degrees is in this region? 34%. So yes, they go to 2-year colleges, but they don't succeed in the 2-year colleges. And usually what they end up with is a lot of student loans and no degree. So that becomes a huge problem as well. So what the PTEC program has shown is, is that if given the right level of support, most kids can not only take college-level courses starting in the 9th grade, but they can successfully complete an associate's degree. And what we're doing with the group that we have now is that the Chamber of Commerce is working to place them in jobs. And we have 7 of those 12 kids that will be staying locally and working in local jobs. The rest are gonna go to 4-year schools. And their starting, average starting salary is $42,000 for a kid right out of high school.
Yeah. But they're not right out of high school? Because a number of them have 2-year degrees.
Well, but they are at high school.
Except the rest of our students that go through high school that actually are on the Regents' track don't get a 2-year degree.
Right.
That's an inequity.
Sure. Well, you can say that.
What can you do about making sure that we are able to do that for all of our students?
Well, that's what we're trying to do right now. It's a great question. Thank you for asking it. We have offered the model and we have offered the COSER that comes with it to help it, make it affordable for you guys to take advantage of. All you gotta do is do it.
So, with COSERS, if I understood what those were correctly from your presentation, it, it's the people that we've hired through Bosie's that are in our district, correct?
Nope.
What are they exactly?
Well, we, it depends on the program, right? So there are folks in, like, I'll just give you a Johnstown Glover's, because they're the latest, that actually won the grant as well as they're setting up PTechs in their high schools. So they'll be using both their employees as well as shared employees, so.
So shared employees are cosers, correct?
Coser of all. Actually, their employees are, can fall under some of the coser as well.
Okay, so are the people that we have that service our district as well as other districts' cosers or not?
We have OT, PT, instructional support services, ENL, yes.
So we've had a hard time sometimes actually filling those coser positions here.
ENL is one of them that we've been working with.
Was that?
ENL is one we've been working with.
Yeah, there's a shortage all over the state, because the state changed
Right.
the regulations, causing the, like, somebody asked a really good question before about mental health, and just out of the blue, the state said, "Oh, that's gonna be mandated now." And then all of a sudden, people are like, "What? You didn't tell us that." And now they're gonna have to run around and they're gonna have to do something about it. And that was the same with the ENL situation. So they came out with all these extra requirements, which then required us to, like, double the number of teachers in the state.
So the question is, for us as a little district, how can you help us fulfill those needs that aren't being met?
Well, we try our best with advertising and looking for folks and offering waivers for people to work as ENL teachers, and people have to be able to wanna do it, so that's basically how, the only thing we can do right now in that particular case. I don't know if that's helpful, but that's the, you know.
There's still other topics.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, great, thank you very much. Good, Bruce, good seeing you, Chris, well, yeah. All right, cheers.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again, Joanne.
Nice seeing you guys.
Thank you for coming.
If you're throwing anything out already.
Feel free, anytime. Give me an email, call, and stuff, try and help me out. You gotta make sure he behaves himself going home.
That's no small task, Joanne.
Actually, I'm the one that gets in trouble, not him.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the student representative.
All right, so my first thing, the reason why I wasn't here for the last meeting, and that was, I was in Washington DC with the AP government class, finally it was rescheduled, and it all worked out, and it was just an amazing experience. I know for a lot of us, it was our first time in DC, it was my first time in DC, it just couldn't have worked out better. Not only for like the educational part of this trip, because I learned so much, like, I can just spew information about DC now, but also getting to know our, you know, peers obviously a little better on the trip, but also, it was so great to build a different relationship with our teachers and see them outside of the classroom, and it was just an amazing experience. And I know the AP go class is planning to make like a little presentation, but after the AP, because that's kind of stressful.
You gotta do that first, right?
Yeah. But yeah, it was just an amazing experience, and I can't thank the board enough for approving that, and we definitely weren't jealous of the weather that was happening here while we were down there. It was literally eighty degrees and we were walking around in shorts while everyone here was in like the middle of the snowstorm, so. Then my other, my only other thing was the new school safety officer. Mr. Peruzzi, I think, has been a great, great, great addition to the school. I know there was like concern about the school feeling like kind of prison-like, I haven't felt that at all, I've felt like, just like, it's been a great addition to our school, like, super friendly guy, obviously doing his job very well. I've talked to him, students are, have built relationships with him, and personally, I haven't gotten to know him too well, but I've talked to him a couple times, and he's just a very nice person, and I see it as being something that will definitely help the school in the future if it continues to happen. And another thing that I think has helped with the not-so-feeling-prison-like in the school is him wearing like the less formal police uniform, just like the polo shirt, it's, you know, not as like scary and, I don't know how else to describe it, but he's just like, he's still like an authority figure, but he's not like a police officer hovering over you. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay, any questions or comments?
One thing's, I was just thinking, go ahead. I was just thinking that it might be nice to ask the, some of the students who went on the trip to give the presentation to the board at a future meeting. Yeah, the second day.
Yeah, after the AP.
You'll be done with three P's and that.
And if people are interested in doing that, you have to ask them.
So on the, on the trip, how did you run the budget?
Um, not really sure, I think it went fine.
Did you have to pay anything or no?
Uh, just for food, that was it, yeah, and that was, it was not much, we were very good at getting things for cheap.
I'd say I gave each of my kids eighty bucks, and they both came home with money.
Yeah, that was same here, I, my mom gave me a hundred dollars and I came home with money, so.
They did. They, it actually cost less than we originally had, because they ended up getting less expensive hotels when he went back out, and also, he had originally booked at least one of the tours online, because that's what it basically suggested you do, but when he had called to cancel because of the weather, and the people kindly refunded the money, they're like, "You know, if you call us and tell us you're a student group, we'll give you a better rate." So when he called back to get the tickets, I think maybe it was Mount Vernon,
Yeah, probably.
who actually gave him a cheaper rate too, so in the end, it cost a little bit less than originally this cost.
I have another question. In terms of the safety officer, you said this made the school much more safe, in a much more safe environment, how?
Um, well, I've seen multiple instances where a student has been like, kind of not like missing, but not in the class they were supposed to be, and he's great about going around and finding the person. I know personally, the one day I was in the senior lounge like half asleep, and he came in and like, was like looking for the person, scared me half to death, but it was, he just does a very good job at finding anybody who's not in the right class, um, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Danielle. Okay, the next item is lead update. I guess that's why you're here, Gary?
Yeah, that's why I'm here. We're getting a little closer to the question, but, well, the final twenty-four faucets retested were sampled Monday, April sixteenth. There were eleven in the Nellis, five at the elementary school, four at the middle school, and four here at the high school. We haven't received, I was kind of hoping to receive the results before the meeting today, but they haven't come in yet. So as soon as we do get those results, I'll share them with the Grimshaw College, they'll probably, you know, the results. I'm feeling positive, but, you know, I can't say anything until, obviously, I see.
These are ones that are being retested, having been above the limit?
Yes, and it's important to understand that those faucets are not in service, we only put them in service to, you know, for the test itself, and then now they're still shut off, so nobody's using them until they get cleared.
Any questions, comments?
Could you just remind us what's our going-forward approach to make sure that our fountains are safe in the future?
Well, none of the fountains came back with lead, high lead update, okay?
So it was all sinks?
It was all, mostly bathroom sinks, there were, I think, one classroom sink. But what will happen in the next, well, first of all, we treat them differently than we did before, we clean more often areas and things like that, but the other thing, that test will be coming back around probably within the next two years, so we'll go through this whole process again and make sure that, you know, to retest and make sure that they're still within the action. On an ongoing basis, like I said, none of our fountains came back, I don't believe, there's been talk that we won't need to do bathroom sinks the next time around, because students aren't, you know, sure, we don't drink out of the bathroom sink. And like I said, that's where our biggest problem was. So I don't think we've ever, we haven't put anybody in any danger of high lead because of our water, so, so I think we're in good condition.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, but don't call you.
Okay.
I would like to ask if the board would be okay with moving the EPC item to the next point on the agenda, since Gary might have some information, should we have questions? Because I know you've been into the, involved with that, and this way you wouldn't have to wait around till we got to it.
Okay.
So is that a deal, or what?
Sure.
Okay, so move on to the EPC.
So as you'll recall, we put out an RFP for different vendors to provide us with proposals for the energy performance contract. After interviewing three, we brought to the board for approval Johnson Controls as our EPC vendor, the board approved that recommendation. So now the first step is to do an extensive assessment of the district. The agreement that we provided with you, we provided you this evening, allows Johnson Control to complete that assessment. The reason why they do the assessment is in their proposal, they provided us with a target that they have to meet, and if the assessment allows them to meet that target, then the cost of the assessment gets rolled into the total cost of the project. So if the project fails to meet the savings impact outlined in the proposal, within a plus or minus of fifteen percent, or the project benefits don't meet the payback period of eighteen years, which is a requirement of the state of an EPC, then the district has no obligation to pay this agreement. We would only have an obligation to pay the agreement if after all the assessment is done, we decide not to move forward, we back out.
Back out.
Right. And again, we've done a lot of work up until this point with the RFPs and the proposals and the interviews, we believe we have recommended and you've selected the best vendor to do this, so unless there's something really unusual that happens, we're thinking positively forward that it's all going to go well. One thing that makes this a little different is that JCI, Johnson Controls, is offering us also the opportunity to include a security assessment as part of the overall energy performance contract. So we are working with a different vendor, the last time Eric was here, remember, he showed you the Armor One, that vendor will come also and provide us with additional security assessment, just to give us additional information that we may find helpful of things that we may consider doing as a district around security and safety. So that's the purpose of this agreement, unless we back out, it really just provides the opportunity for Johnson Controls to complete the assessment and move forward with the EPC.
I have a few questions. One you just raised, which is to add the security assessment, is that something we're gonna have to pay for regardless? Or is that gonna be part of that?
No, that's part of it.
It's part of it, it's listed.
It's listed as part of the overall assessment.
So we're not paying that as long as we don't back out.
Correct.
Okay. Now, this fifteen percent that you mentioned is one of my questions, so my original understanding was that it had to save us the entire amount over eighteen years, but it's now, it's actually only plus or minus fifteen percent, so it could save us eighty-five percent, and we must just.
Sorry, can I?
Yeah, that's why you're here.
They, they gave us a number, two-point-four million dollars, that would be our savings, if, you know, for all these energy things, and those are supposed to, that are gonna come within the eighteen-year period. What they're saying is, if they do the assessment, they'll only come up with two-point-three million, well, that's within the fifteen percent. The whole two-point-three million has to fit within the eighteen-year period, and they would pay.
So we won't have any liability financially? Correct, okay. Oh, one thing in the timeline, I don't know which page that's on.
Page two.
Yeah, it's on page two, yeah. It seemed, I was confused that the, to work with the school's financial advisor about interest rates and state aid rates for the project came, is scheduled before the proposed improvement list. That's scheduled on May eleventh, and the proposed improvement list doesn't come out till the twenty-fifth, so I was wondering how could we get all that calculated before we know what we're doing?
If I read this, it's the list, but it's also the final contract proposal for the savings, which is why they have to have those interest rates and things like that built into it to know what we're saving.
They help, they help with the final, development of the final proposal. So fiscal advisors will be working with us, right? Our friends are fiscal advisors.
That made sense to me, because you need the numbers to be able to calculate out the value.
Do the final question, that's correct.
Okay, so that's it, we have any questions?
I didn't see any holes in this.
We did have our school attorneys, as always, as they review every contract, review this one as well.
It looked straightforward, yeah. If we don't back out.
Back out, we're good.
We're good.
Okay, so thank you very much, Gary, and we will move on back to the agenda, as it's, we'll go through the safety update.
Thank you. See ya.
Thanks, everyone.
So there are two items, so let's talk about the school safety officer first, is the district safety operational plan, they have some questions, because it's just, it's a draft. So, as we discussed, when we entered into the agreement with the village for the school safety officer till the end of the year, at each board meetings, we'll be provided with an update of the activities of the school safety officer. Officer Peruzzi provides me in chief with a daily list of activities, what I've done is grouped them into tasks that are ongoing, so he's done a lot in a little bit of time, including getting a round of applause from the high school student body on the day when we did our high-threat incident training. So he has been very helpful in conducting initial meetings with administrators, teachers, and school staff, he does daily exterior perimeter checks of the building, he is also in each of the buildings at various times and random times throughout the day, he has supported staff and administrators in terms of dealing with students, he has provided some assistance with some traffic concerns I've had here at the high school, so he's working on that. I'm really thrilled that in the past couple of weeks that he's been here, he's done a class presentation to sixth grade, he's done a class presentation at the high school, and he participated in the high school assembly on our high-threat incident training for students. He's also been at some of the elementary classrooms for snack, which is, I'm sure, enjoyable and quite lovely. So there's a lot of different things that, that he has done, so far, so good, as he has seen things, he's provided opportunities to do child safety seat checks, which is something he's trained in, which was a value added for us, and also provided us some suggestions related to lockdown drills, the use of Narcan, and how to support an elementary classroom that, that was interested in having some interaction with him. So, so far, so good.
Have those child safety seat things been with parents picking up children?
So far, they've been with some staff members, hasn't done it yet with, with the parents picking up kids.
Any questions on that part of the presentation? Yes?
A couple, yeah, a couple. You mentioned six incidents that have been found on the six, the school grounds in terms of.
Yep.
Can you give us a, what those are?
It's just, like Danielle said, it might be helping locate students who aren't where they are supposed to be.
So nothing serious?
Nothing, no, nothing serious, it's just routine matters of helping administrators.
Okay. And then it talked about legal substance abuse, would you give us an overview of that?
Yes, there have been some reports of students perhaps engaging in illegal drug use by some smells or vaping, so when asked to do that, he'll help and work with, with Ms. Gleason on doing those kind of investigations. We haven't found anything, but if there, but it is not uncommon, and it was happening before.
No, I know, I just wanted to know if it's.
It hasn't produced anything.
Right.
But we follow, we, we take those reports very seriously, and we always investigate them. Now, we just have another support to do that.
And then the last one was the...
Can I just ask on that? And if they were to find an illegal substance, like some...
They still come to me.
Okay, so, goes to you, it's not immediately a criminal.
It's never been, Mark, we've done it before.
No, just reconfirming.
If, if there's any suspicion of something, I'm involved too. And, and he assists in that, but I do everything surrounding the situation.
We generally just ask them to remove said substance from the building.
And then deal with it as a discipline.
Yeah, and it's always been disciplinary.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 very perfect. And then the other one I had, that I had a question about bully complaints. Can you please give us an overview of that?
He did not specifically tell me, like, he just wrote that down was that he assisted with a bully incident and a bully complaint. So, he doesn't give any details. I've asked him just for the general overviews.
I mean, I'm really glad to, to see what he's working on. At the same time, I think it can open our eyes and we should be aware then of what kinds of things these are.
There's nothing new on this list that we don't deal with every single day.
I'm not challenging that.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
I wanna make sure there's no significant, serious issues coming in these things.
Correct, yeah.
Can I say also, um, the safety officer? I just had one other request that we get an update at the second meeting in May of, you know, kind of a rundown of what's happened, what's transpired over those thirty days.
You ask for one every single meeting.
Oh, okay, so we get it, I, I didn't know.
That's okay, we'll give it to you every meeting.
Okay.
That was what we agreed to. And remember, in May, we also decided that we would survey everybody, students, as well as parents, aunts, staff, just on their perceptions. And I think Danielle's given us some great advice tonight, or great input tonight, some early information and data. But we'll do that, we'll do that survey again in May, so we'll have that information as well.
I know personally, it's taking a little bit of getting used to that there's a police car here. Because before, that was always meaning something happened.
Yeah, yeah. And that was, and because he bookends his days here, and he does spend time in the morning talking with students and at the end of the day, talking with students. We see the police car here then. The other, on Tuesday, as you, as you may recall, we had Regent Outokirke here and I found it very interesting, and I haven't seen him really to ask him, but everywhere we were, he was there. It was like we would turn the corner magically, they're like, how are you here already? But, so he was, as we were in each different building, so was he, so that was just nice to see. So, again, you had asked for a report every month, or every meeting.
Before we leave that report, what's his feedback on, because it's a new role for him too?
He has, I know, and he said, you know, after the first week, he said, "I thought I would be bored." He said, "There is so much to do and there's so many opportunities to interact." He does those hallway checks, the building perimeter checks of all the buildings every day. He said, "My day is full." He must put on a lot of steps during the day because he walks a lot. So, my observation is I've been out and around the district. Again, he's out there, he's in the hallways, he's interacting. So, that's been really helpful.
I spoke with him one day when I was here. And he said that it's really been a wonderful experience in the elementary school. The kids are really drawn to him and he's having a great interaction. He said, "The middle and high school is a little bit more, you know, getting the kids to even look at him sometimes." But, but he's working on it. And he, and he understands that it's gonna be a slower process. But basically, he seems quite pleased with how things are going up to this point.
We, we were all delightfully pleased when they introduced him when we did the high-threat incident training for students. He did, he got ovation from the student body here, which I, I don't know that we all anticipated, but was, to me, definitely a telling sign. So, even if they aren't friendly with him yet, they seem to appreciate him being here.
Can I say something as a teacher related to this? I was a little, I was kind of on defense about this. And my class is right in front of the school. And every time you'd see a police car come up, kids would get really upset and anxious before this. And I have to tell you, I've had more kids in my class say, "I wanna be a police officer, Michael." Now, he is really wonderful and it's been really excellent since I think. All of my concerns were, you know, aside. And he was really great.
I share your concerns and it's really good to mediate that as well.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Excellent, there's no, they, the very kids who were, would get very upset. I think they've had their own experience with police coming to their homes. They're the ones that are kind of actually rather more safety conscious.
Thank you. On the safety thing, are we not gonna discuss that?
Yeah, no, no, that's, no, this is part two.
Okay.
So, at this meeting, we had agreed that there would be the draft of the operational safety plan. So, I have that and it is listed draft because I am sure, as you all have read it, there are things that you want to discuss or see what you add or what... Oh, no, I don't expect that. What, that we would add, that we would subtract or add to. So, here's what I did. I put in the groupings that I had talked about with the outline before, where there are action steps, where there are things that need to be done. I have noted those. If there are not action steps, it's because those things are already occurring or ongoing. As I was putting this together, my thinking really was that this could become part of the district-wide safety plan, which the safety committees will need to have update anyway. And to remind the board, there's the district-wide safety plans required by state and then there's building safety plans that we have that are internal documents that are known by the buildings and those are typically the emergency procedures that we use, that are the regular things that we do for drills and for other things. So, those are those internal plans or internal procedures. So, this could be a great accompaniment to the district-wide safety plan. So, just with that little introduction, perhaps I can entertain some questions or some feedback about what's here. And earlier this week, Jen did send me the little piece about the crisis council to put in there. So, just to let you know, I have that. That's okay, we've been a little ready.
Okay, so, any questions or comments about the safety plan?
Things to deal with.
The, the Raptor system for visitor access?
Yes.
Is that the, is that the finished stage of visitor access? We're gonna be able to keep that long-term?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the, we purchased it, the hardware has arrived from this assembly with Santa Barbara brand. So, we're, we're doing the install.
And then we'll integrate with everything else that we're planning. That, that was really my question.
Yes, yes.
I have one, I, on page five, under building access. I think that it should be, it talks about the buildings are all open at 7:00 AM. And I think it should, there should be some discussion of what the security precautions are between seven and when the doors are locked at eight in terms, in all three buildings.
Okay, yep, so...
In other words, from seven to eight, the doors are open, kids are coming in. No, I'm, in the high school, I'm speaking, but, I mean, so I say all three buildings because I know it's different in each building.
Right.
But it would be nice to know what precautions we're taking from seven to eight. And I do see, and I'm happy to see that we're gonna get access badges for the fitness center.
Yeah, Gary's working on finishing that up.
So, that would be, it'll just give us a much better... The other thing that I would just share is that originally, he was only, the safety officer was only gonna be here till three and worked it out, he's here till 3:15. So, he's here till all the kids are on the buses and gone. Because that's a really, you know, a very vulnerable time, you know, considering the things we're talking about.
And he's here at seven when the doors get unlocked.
He's here at 7:15, his day is 7:15 to 3:15.
So, I mean, that's something that I think we maybe need to address, starting at seven. You know, I, I don't think we wanna have a window.
That would be an action step is to consider at the high school, how to cover that period of time from seven to 7:15.
I think that should...
And that's what I thought.
We'll put it as an action step.
Yeah, because that's what was missing, I thought, was, you know, real detail of that for each building. And as Stacy was indicating, you know, at the elementary school, that's taken care of already.
Right, elementary and middle are fine.
Yeah, so...
So, it's high school from seven to seven.
But it would still be nice to indicate what's going on at the elementary and middle school as well, you know, so people understand.
And those have been enhancements that we've really done over the past three years, four years, some number of years.
Before we leave that topic, I have a related comment in the same space.
Yeah, that's okay.
I, I really would like us to have an action step that also reviews the locking of the doors in terms of, do we have the right kinds of mechanized locks? The discussion we had earlier in regards to, some of them are, they were put in at a time when they wanted egress as the primary thing.
Correct, correct.
And that might not be the right primary thing now.
So, when you think about East Hill, the proposal for the capital outlay project, because that's where some of those doors are located. And the capital outlay project is to start to replace those exterior doors even before the formal cap project starts, so that we can start to address...
And some of them might be just changing the way the lock works.
Right, but it's that review of what, what each of the doors...
So, that action step, I think, also needs to be in there from a security perspective.
And we'll actually get that full-scale detail. We do have someone working with us on the doors and the locks. S. Abloy, is that the right name of the company? S. Abloy out of East Syracuse. So, they're doing a full assessment of all the door locks. So, we'll actually have that data. So, then we can use that data, maybe when we get it, what we would really, the action step is not only the review, but the strategic decision about what doors to do first.
Correct.
Okay.
And prioritize what's our thinking now.
Yeah.
Because I, I recognize it's a shift over time. And we can make sure that we're moving the facility with that shift.
Okay, can I add that?
Anything else?
Thank you.
While you're talking about the door access for the secure, to get into the building...
One thing I would just like to ask, please raise your hand and be recognized.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, now go ahead.
Okay. Are you also looking at the entries into the classrooms or is that a separate plan?
That's part of the capital project. We're gonna be redoing all the door hardware, so that, that's already in there.
But, but I think, I think we should still have that, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't raise my hand.
I, I think we should still have that on our action step, acknowledging that we have an intent.
Right, it is under the section of the facility safety with all of the capital improvement. So, it is on the very last page, it's on page seven, because the interior, interior door hardware replacement is part of the capital project. We could have it in two places, there's nothing to say you can't. So, we could do it in both places. Because that's the last section, can you go down to the last section?
Okay, under facility.
Yeah, under facility safety. I chose to put all of the capital project things that are related to safety in that one section. That's just a semantic and logistical, so we could move it to include it also under building safety.
I'm, I'm sorry, when I, when I read indoor hardware replacement, my brain didn't go to the right thing.
Oh, that's okay, okay.
I understand.
But we can have it in two places.
No, that's okay.
And more things is, just to remind me, is, is interior door, the classroom doors, they'll be able to be locked from the inside as well.
Yes. When we get that, and when we get that information back, we'll be, there'll be a report on that when we get that information back from S. Abloy.
So, that won't be until 2018, is that correct? And can we get these bars, which we can...
They are, they're there, they're in the offices, they passed, that happened three weeks ago.
They don't...
There is a key lock cabinet in each office and direct procedures were sent to the building principals and the school staff. So, I'll ask the building principals to confirm that, that, that those procedures are in operation on a daily basis.
Subs are supposed to get a license, but we found that some have to...
Right, they're licensed.
We take keys.
It's a little better.
Because you don't think about it, you don't have your license, but you don't have your car keys, you can't leave.
So, yeah, yeah, so we do have that, so every sub now gets their key for the day. So, they can keep the doors unlocked.
Does that, does that respond to your question? I have one other...
I'm sorry, on the same topic, does that mean our regular teachers do have the ability to lock the door from the inside?
No. Not with us.
No, not the, some, some classrooms at East Hill have a deadbolt lock that, right, Jean, it's a deadbolt lock?
It's a deadbolt, so...
It's a deadbolt.
You can lock it one time, but the minute you open it for somebody...
Right, and then it's...
You have to lock, you have to...
Then you have to lock it again?
Right.
About at least 50 times a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an automatic thing, once a door opens, the deadlock automatically unlocks.
So, our short-term fix was to make sure everybody, at least all the subs had keys, so that teachers and subs had keys. That's not all doors, but it is some doors at East Hill.
So, the, the full, or the regular teachers that have that kind of door do have a key to do that with, right?
Yeah. And one of the concerns was substitutes didn't, so we corrected that across the district.
What about aides? About, like, like we have aides that walk groups of children through the building? Like, so, for example, if Ms. Stevenson, sometimes she's bringing four or five children down hall to greeting and she needs to, you know, there's a lockdown, go into the library, maybe nobody's in there. How would she, somebody like her, like, secure a door herself? Like, is it possible to get the aides that runs groups of children through?
We can talk about that, yeah, that's a good, I'm gonna write that down to have a conversation about that.
I've had those.
Again, we appreciate your input. Please raise your hand, oh, please raise your hand and be recognized, that's all.
Is the background check stuff in here? I'm sorry, I'm not...
Yeah, the volunteer, the volunteer piece is, we didn't, we still have some work, some finishing work to do on the volunteer form, which is, went back to the attorneys again for another check because we're trying to be really thoughtful about that. And it is, hold on.
It's right above the facility safety.
It should be in procedure. That's okay, it should be under procedural?
Yeah.
I think I put it under there? Oh, well, I have my pages in there. Now, I got my pages on that stuff. School volunteers. There's one other thing that needs to happen when we talk to our, the attorneys. We do not have a board policy, policy committee on volunteers. So, we're going to have to, to do that. So, we'll have to have a board policy around volunteers and then publish everything so that it's ready to go in the fall.
Can we just get sample copies?
Yeah, that's what we have, we have, when we sent it back the last time to the attorneys, we asked for sample copies, we'll also check our Erie Wemboeses. And then the policy committee would need to meet to develop a policy because we don't, one of the questions the attorney had was, "Do you have a policy?"
There always is.
And we don't. We have a visitor policy, not a volunteer.
Okay, it is the fall meeting.
Yep, fall meeting.
And then could I ask, I know it's not part of the safety plan, but because we've had kind of this closed down to get everything under control, it, I think it would be good for us to do a positive request of asking for volunteers to come back now.
Yes.
And we should think about that because if we're gonna have this all in place in the fall, it would be really nice to coordinate that in a way that we say, "Look, school's open again, right? We, we want your help and involvement."
I just wanna make a comment real quickly regarding volunteerism, specifically yesterday in this board. Just a fantastic showing at the library. I was only able to stay there for 10 minutes, they had a par, I guess, final kind of dinner, yeah, yeah. So, it was just, you know, I, I went there before our, our meeting and I love to see stuff like that. There's probably, I don't know, a couple hundred people, maybe. Yeah, it was very nice, yeah, so thank you for that, yeah, we were talking about volunteers. But they did a really nice job, very pleased to see that, so thank you.
Okay, I have one other comment on page seven, under the dignity for all students.
Yep.
Last sentence says, "The district office several remediation programs for students." And I think it would be nice to just list them.
List them, okay.
I mean, not with a big explanation, but just say what they are.
Yep.
Just a comment overall, I was very pleased with the plan.
Yeah, let's take a shake.
I think it needs to be seen really as a working document and as a living, breathing document. It can't be shelf art. So, part of, I think, I don't know how the board would choose to do this, but there should be some thought given moving into the future about a regular schedule of review. The building safety teams might help with that, but there should also be... The building safety teams might help with that, but there should also be some level of the board review of the plan so that it can be moved forward and grow and change.
I totally agree and would think that we want some cycle where the safety teams are reviewing more frequently and then it's coming to the board periodically for, here's how we're progressing.
Right. And whatever that periodically means, we should...
Twice a year.
Twice a year, maybe, yeah. So, the next step will be to kind of add these revisions, get it out to you one more time just for review and then we can start using it as a document. And again, the action steps that are in here are things we've talked about all along, so we'll just keep doing that. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, the next point is the goal, what is the vision goal? But, I'd like to suggest that we just go through each area, any questions or comments? And go through it that way rather than just do the whole document all at once. So, just to share this with the attendees, the audience, we had a board retreat, we had actually two board retreats. I take that back. We had three board retreats to try to come up with a draft set of goals for the district that are in line with our new vision statement. And this is our, the draft that was produced as a result of those three meetings that we've had. The first meeting of which was a swat analysis that included the building leaders to talk about what our strengths and weaknesses and threats and opportunities. And we use that as the basic jumping off point to establish the goals that are included in this document, this draft. So, just wanted to give you a little bit of background where this came from. Okay, so, on the, the first one is curriculum and instruction. Any comments or anything about that? I could tell you that we spent a lot of time on this and I, I'm not sure how much additional we need to talk about today, but it's certainly something that is going to be shared with the staff and the, and the students and the parents and, you know, for input before we get, get to the point of adopting it and finalizing it. So, anything on curriculum?
On the last part for annual target, we didn't finish the sentence.
Yeah, I just noticed that. I didn't catch it, the hanging sentence.
Well, I am famous for hanging sentences. Ask Patty. I do it all the time.
I did catch it.
So, on the bottom, we will figure, I will go back to my notes and see what that is.
I can't remember.
I can't remember. It would be on my notes, so I always am doing hanging sentences. Good catch.
The other thing right above notes, and I, maybe I'm not understanding, it says something about flipping classroom or other pedagogy.
Yeah, we never came back because of the came back to that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, that would be an area to, to finish that wording. So, some things never, did not get kind of finished, so that...
So, where is that?
Those...
Next to that bullet.
Okay.
Something about, something, we had, we had something, but it's never articulated. You didn't have it articulated, so...
So, I think what we were talking about was how do we change the instruction methodologies? And I think we talked about that somewhat at technology piece too, that, you know, as we evolve this, if we're changing our curriculum, then we also need to be changing how the teaching is occurring, which is what pedagogy is about, so, I mean...
Right.
And I, I think it was also tied to the one-to-one initiative.
Exactly. That's what I meant by the technology.
Okay, so, those are two areas that we have to look at a little bit more and come back to those.
At least if you finish the hanging sentences. You do it all the time.
Okay, moving on to engagement. What's the, we said, on the key objectives, graduation requirement?
I, I was thinking the same thing, Mark.
That there was, you had a conversation about a graduation requirement for community participation or community service.
Community service, yeah. So, that should be, that should be expanded.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the way we left that is we decided not to mandate anything that say this is something that we ought to evolve and develop as part of our district.
The development of the community service component.
I think that's something that, you know, like, we should have a dialogue about with the staff and the students and the parents and the community and see if that's something that they would like us to move up the, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Anything else on engagement? Okay, then moving on to budgeted resources.
I guess I did have one thing from the Boses' presentation. One question that came to my mind is, is there overlap on the community piece? And we ought to make sure we know, because they, they had a bullet under there about some programs for education of the community and stuff. And we should just make sure that we're not paying for something twice. It's really what came to my mind as we were looking at it.
Adult education?
Yeah, maybe that was...
Adult education.
Yeah, their adult education is not the same thing as our community education. Their adult education, our...
You're talking about the night class.
Yes, they, and...
Progressing towards what is now the new GED.
The new GED, it's literacy class, it's the new GED, LPN. Yeah, they do some of those. Carryover from, right. So, it's not quite the same. Ours tends to be a little more community-based, some of it student-based, based on community interests.
And budgeted resources, anything?
The one that I was remembering was the literacy thing.
That's adult, adult literacy program.
Okay, we're done. Budgeted resources and technology. And again, we're going through this kind of quickly, but it's just to kind of make some corrections.
It's not fair.
You'll definitely get an opportunity to see this in the green.
Well, it's also, it's posted publicly.
It's posted.
No, it's not posted.
No, it's not public.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just looking at, all students and staff should have access or do you want that to be little have access? Because we can say we should for everything, but it's just the terminology.
Thoughts?
Okay, that's our intent. It's our, it's our goal statement.
He will.